Great. All the people that you're here to celebrate, thank you for coming and thank you for supporting your family and your friends and students. With that, I'll call the meeting's order at 6 o'clock. Roll call please.
Here.
Mr. Cacetti?
Here.
Mrs. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Mariano?
Here.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Bobby?
Here.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
All right, we have the forum. Everyone in attendance, if you could please rise for the pleasure of the meeting. Oh, sorry, please bring our leaders in.
(inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, board. We're super excited to have our May Huntley High five students here with us tonight. So I'm going to ask that each one of them comes up and introduces themselves to you.
Um, my name is Dylan. Um, Dylan, and I'm in sixth grade and, um, I'm a head teacher.
Dylan. Okay, now the next part, after you introduce yourself, I am going to read what your teacher or one of your teachers nominated you for. So I know this part's really hard, but be nice and proud. You guys have some fantastic thoughts set about you. So Dylan, here's what Mrs. Hewitt had to say about you. Dylan has shown tremendous growth this year in second grade. Dylan loves to share his thinking. Through all the growth that Dylan has made academically this year, one thing that has remained constant since the very first day of school is his great big heart. He has had a big smile and a wave for everyone he passes by in the hallway. He is kind and empathetic friend and is always willing to lend a helping hand or make a classmate feel better when they're sad. I'm so proud of Dylan. Nice job.
Hi, my name is Belle Walvis. I'm in fourth grade and my school is Conley.
And Belle, here is what Mrs. Schultz and Mrs. Langham had to say about you. Belle is a pleasure to work with. She displays effort in everything she does and has a great work ethic. She is eager to learn new things and tries her best on all of her assignments and activities. She shows up to school with the biggest smile on her face and positive energy. She is a role model as she works well with others and has a cheerful demeanor. Belle thinks about others and goes out of her way to be helpful to her teachers. We are so proud of her growth this school year and we know she will continue to do amazing things in the future. Congratulations.
This is Ryland. And Ryland is from McCaveen Elementary. And this is one of my kindergarten students, which is what she's going to read about you.
And Ryland, this is what Mrs. Lockington said about you. Ryland began the school year as a very young kindergartner. Writing her name numbers and alphabet was a huge challenge when she first came to school, but with lots of practice and support from her teacher and her parents, Ryland has realized that extra practice has helped her learn and master those kindergarten skills. Ryland gives it her all and does her best, and we love her new growth mindset. Ryland, you can do anything you put your mind to. Congratulations.
My name is Leviathan Bloosletter. I'm from Headland Elementary and I'm in sixth grade.
And here was what your nomination said. Leviathan shows tremendous growth as a leader, is always ready to help his peers, and consistently makes an effort to include everyone in group activities, ensuring no one feels left out. Leviathan truly embodies what it means to be a good friend, offering a helping hand or a kind word when someone is feeling down. He's curious and eager to learn, seeking, constantly seeking out new information and generously sharing his knowledge. His enthusiasm and willingness to support others creates a classroom environment where everyone feels inspired and can encourage to learn. Congratulations.
My name is Noah Lopez. I'm in fourth grade and I go to Lacy Elementary.
And Noah, here is what your nominator has said. I have seen Noah many times be so helpful to other students. He holds doors open and shares kind words. Noah is sure he includes everyone. Noah is a good friend to everyone and is very inclusive. He really does have the kindest heart. Keep up the great work, Noah.
Hi, my name is Natalia Vidina Dular and I'm in sixth grade in Heinemann.
And this was from, what does it say? Which teacher? So, one of your teachers, Natalia. Oh, it's the PE team. So all of the PE teachers are excited to recommend you for the Heinemann High five award. Natalia is a wonderful student. We regularly see her making her best effort even when trying something new or challenging. She takes pride in her work and supports and encourages others in the classroom. Natalia is a caring and supportive friend. She cheers on peers and has often seemed supporting them with a smile. Natalia represents the Heinemann way by demonstrating respect for others, showing responsibility in her own efforts, and getting involved in supporting others, making their day better. Great job.
Hi, I am Graham Pyrex and I am in sixth grade at Marlowe Middle School.
Graham, here's your nomination. Ready? From day one, Graham has not only been a great student in the classroom, but also a kind and thoughtful presence in our entire school community. Consistently demonstrating what it truly means to be a Marlowe Mustang through his leadership, empathy, and positive attitude. Graham greets staff every morning with a smile and a genuine kindness setting and welcoming tone for the day. He's always willing to lend his hand to his peers, whether it's offering help with classwork, including someone who feels left out, or simply being a supportive friend. His actions reflect a strong sense of empathy and maturity beyond his years. Graham is a genuine, thoughtful, and determined student. He is a true role model and we're lucky to have him part of our Marlowe Mustang family. Congratulations.
Hello, my name is Ben and I'm in eighth grade at Heinemann High School.
Ben, and here's your nomination. Ben exemplifies the Raider Way by being respectful, responsible, and involved in all aspects of his education. He stays focused, completes assignments on time, and follows classroom expectations. Always prepared and engaged, he collaborates well with his peers, asks for help when needed, and serves as a positive influence and advisory. He's punctual, follows rules, helps others with their work. His dedication and work ethic make him a valued member of the classroom and a role model for others. Way to go, Ben. Now, I know that was really hard, especially since this meeting, it's entire room is full. It's usually not like this. So you guys did a fantastic job. We're going to ask you to come on up this way. We have a little certificate. We'd like to get a picture. While you do that, I'd like to thank the parents for sharing your wonderful children with us every day.
Parents, you're welcome to come up. You're supposed to, you need to, to get a picture.
Can you go that way a little bit more? Oh, perfect. All right, guys. One, two, three. Couple more. And then the parents.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Every May, the committee as a whole, we recognize our staff across the district for their milestones that they did. Historically, at the board meeting, if we go back about 10 years, we used to recognize our tenure teachers, teachers of 20, 25, 30, 35, 40, and even of 45 last year. We have had to scale that back, and it's primarily retirees tonight, and three other folks that have reached 30 years. So we have quite the list. This class of 2025 is setting a few records across the district, including all staff. We have 35 retirees this year. We're usually about six to eight on a given year, so this is a big year for retirees in the district. We are going to hand out 262 awards over the next three weeks. So starting tomorrow, at Heinemann, we'll hit the Square Mark campus, and cabinet will visit classrooms and hand out our, we're going to do 20, 25, it's going to be maybe 15 also, to see what's there when we get there. But we're going to hand out those awards. We go to classrooms, workspaces, and celebrate everyone, get some pictures, and try to include other students. But tonight, we're going to include the families, and the board, and our administrators. And first up, we're going to invite Kathy Purdom and Katie Surgeonett. Kevin, would you like to give them a hug? Kathy has been a custodian with the district. She's at Conley currently, and she is retiring after 34 years with the district. Congratulations.
All right, we're going to invite Donna Runyon in now. Donna pulled the old double retirement on me. She retired and decides to stay a couple more weeks. So we're welcome to have Donna here for a couple more weeks as we close out the school year up in fiscal. She's been working in fiscal, and she's been with the district for 20 years. Oh, Donna, you could have started off. That thing's good. All right. You get a good grip here. All right. Yeah, give it a take. That's good. All right, from the early childhood center, Melissa Paddock. Melissa has, oh, they got a lot of notes on, on Melissa here. Sorry. She's been with the district a total of 10 years, and she's served as a parent professional. So congratulations, Melissa, on your retirement. All right, we're bringing up the high school now. Everyone from the high school is coming up. Come on up. Everyone from the high school. I was talking to Rochelle out in the hall, and she goes, hey, am I the only one here not retiring? No, there's two other folks that aren't retiring. I even told her, take a look at my paper. For me, in all caps and bold, not retiring. They wanted to make sure I was very aware that you're not retiring also. Rochelle has been with the district for 30 years, so she's getting our 30-year award. Next up from the high school, Brendan Dowling has been with the district for 21 years. Dowling was giving me a hard time. She goes, oh, Martha doesn't give a, get to give a speech about me tonight. So I told her I would do it. I'm on a timeline too, Stella. So I'm going to come over to the last faculty meeting and help out with you. Is that okay?
I can't wait.
All right. So Shelley Kish, she's our associate principal over at the high school. She's been with the district in multiple roles for 22 years. Oh, Paige, we need to get this right. You'll know Paige. She does the work program and pulls the interviews in here if you've been a part of that. So Paige Shoshwary.
Shoshwary.
Shoshwary. That was close. All right, Paige, next time I'll get that. All right. So Paige is retiring, so there won't be a next time. Happy 11 years with the district. Congratulations, Paige.
All right, we got another bell.
Didn't you give me a high five, Paige?
Did you give me a high five, Paige?
You know that is the first pause within that. August is going to move on. All right, here we go. All right, next up is Laura Schalcross. Laura's been with the district for 20 years. Get a good grip? There we go. Congratulations. No, you get it. It's, this is, we're not taking any of this back. We don't have room in each R4. Mr. Stoss. Mr. Stoss. I got a connection with Mr. Stoss. Oh, here we go. Mr. Stoss is the first person I met in Huntley 158. Do you know that?
Yeah.
Yep. Mr. Stoss was the first person I, and it was a while ago. We won't go back how long ago that was. But Mr. Stoss has been, and thank you, Mr. Stoss, for the opportunity, for bringing me up from central Illinois. Mr. Stoss has been with the district for 34 years. Congratulations. Are you keeping track, buddy? That's two hugs. Right, right there?
Yeah.
That's two, we're good? All right, that's two. It's good. All right, did you give you a hug?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
I didn't know it was involved.
Yeah, you are now. You're involved. No, I don't want to compete for hugs. All right. We are going to invite Heinemann, a middle school up right now. Dana? Dana Fromm? Hi, Dana. Come on up here with us. Dana's in one of the tough, difficult positions, probably one of the toughest in the district. She serves as a psychologist over at Heinemann, and she's been with the district for 20 years. So, congratulations, Dana. All right, Wookiee. Let's bring everyone out from Wookiee. Our first retiree from Wookiee is Don Bock, an MPSS interventionist who's been with the district for 29 years. Congratulations. Next up from Wookiee is Wendy Diopren. She's been with the district for 25 years. Next up from Wookiee is Joanne Heim. She's been with the district for 11 years. You've got McCabon next.
Hey, McCabon.
All right, first up from McCabon, serving the district for 20 years, Kim Hopkins. Also with 20 years of service and retiring, Tracy Thorpe. Kathy is next. It's bold, Melissa. Not retiring, not retiring. Melissa's celebrating 30 years with Huntley 158. Martin? All right, here we go. You got three?
We have three.
All right, Laura. Not retiring. Coming back. All right, Laura Como has been with the district for 30 years. Kathy's up next. Kathy Murray's been with the district for 20 years, and Kathy has her stuff already. So, it's not like we're leaving her out. We didn't forget anything. She's got her stuff, right, Kathy? You got my back? All right. Kathy has her stuff already. All right, Sheila. Sheila's been with the district for 20 years. Sheila Brannick from Martin. All right, Marlo. Vince Lombard is winning in hugs, clearly. Taking them off at the door, I like that. All right, Kristen, right? Kristen Brerick, retiring, MPSS interventionist, 20 years with Huntley 158. Congratulations. All right. This is it, Carrie, your last one on the list? On my list anyway. Did we miss anybody? This is it, that's all I have. Anyone else? Our studio.
Not let me decide tonight.
If you decide tonight, we do not have a trophy for you. We need a week. From Marlo, MPSS facilitator, 20 years with the district, Carrie Miller. All right, we're going to have, oh, sorry. All right, we're going to have everyone, so we've got a couple logistical things here. We're going to have everyone come up for a picture in a second, but also on your way out, there's a couple of tables that have the boxes for all of this. We were going to try to make this, have enough stuff to carry, so make sure you grab your box on the way out, so you can store those things away for the drive home before everything goes on your shelf. So, we're going to have everyone come up here, and Denise is going to organize the picture we're going to do. Thank you very much.
I'll probably need, well, I'll have to.
Oh, boy, I'm going to be a hot mess there.
Almost, Lauren.
Congratulations.
Very important, so we got to.
It's going to be different, Mark. You're going to have, you're going to achieve a different view. I mean, it is.
If you need to change something, I tell you.
How I never get four. Because I probably never see a four.
Well, you can just send it through, that's a better one. No, uh. She's wonderful.
Before we move ahead, since we're in the employee recognition section, today is National Principals Day, so I wanted to recognize the principals that are here in the room, although there are more outside. I hope you all had an enjoyable day, celebrating National Principals Day in your school. All right, with that, we'll move on to number four, public comment. I do have one sheet, but I think I saw Mr. Schalcross through the room. Yeah, so I'm not sure if he's coming back.
He's had a few left.
Okay, then there's five. Moving on to number five, revision and adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda as we have presented? I've seen a lot of shaking heads. I will move to go ahead and adopt the agenda as presented. Second. Mr. Crowdy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Right, motion passes seven zero. I'll move to curriculum and instruction committee.
One of the things that Sharon and I realized as we were looking at the agenda and policy and all of those things is that the community structure will be voted on, but our next meeting isn't, the voting meeting isn't until the 15th. They're not all updated in here, but I think with the, let's, you open it up, or you can just read and send that?
I don't have it here. But I believe it's Mr. Kennedy.
Oh, Dr. McKenna.
All right, good evening. Tonight, we do have, Ms. Gill and I do have a couple of updates or presentations for you, and the numbers are in the packet. The first topic that we have is regarding the contract for professional learning for our next school year. I do want to let you guys know that at the April committee of the whole meeting, we did present our professional learning focus for the '25, '26 school year. During that meeting, we shared that we've gathered feedback from staff, as well as our principals, as well as our, as well as our district administration to identify those focuses. And so, the contracts that we have presented tonight are the ones that are larger scale in order to help support that learning. And then, Ms. Lombard and I had discussed that we wanted to also include some of the ones that are under the amount that we would typically have the board approve, so that we're being transparent about how much we are spending on those professional learning contracts, and bringing them in front of you. So, Ms. Gill and I will just talk through a couple of these with you, and then we can, we can look forward to moving those forward to the next board meeting. All of these funds have been allocated either through our Title II grants, IDEA grants, or our local budget dollars projected for next school year. And so, that's how the fund will be leveraged. But we'll start with Ms. Gill.
I want to order. So, our first contract is for Easter Steels. Remember, a year ago, we signed a contract with Easter Steels. They provide a number of different professional development opportunities for our staff. Some are in the form of training, and some are coaching. So, what you see here is some professional development for our teachers specifically around structuring, effective teaching, so in some of our special education classrooms, the strategies that we would use to support those students, and then also classroom setups. So, we have a number of students with very complex learning needs.
So, we have a number of students with very complex learning needs, and we utilize Easter Steels to help our teachers set up their classroom in a visually supported way using tools, so that on day one, when students come to the classroom, uh, it is fully supported and teachers are able to, um, work with the individualized students, point chiefs and things like that. So, um, this has been a contract we've had for multiple years, and, uh, last year, uh, we really got a lot of positive feedback from staff, uh, specifically about how the classroom setups really help. So, that's the first.
Okay, before you move on to the next one, um, as part of, um, our federal grant, um, a certain percentage of our dollars must be allocated towards professional development, training and all of those things. And so while, um, looking at some of the costs of the training, it's extremely, um, beneficial and very supportive of our staff. I do wanna point out that, uh, I believe it's a twenty percent, uh, that the.
Uh, I do, I don't have the exact percentage, because we do calculate it and make sure we stay under that sort of like asset threshold, so we don't, you know, lose any of our, our federal dollars. But we do, we do make sure that we are within our federal dollars to, uh, provide the professional learning. So, any questions about Easter Steels maybe one by one? No? Okay. Uh, the second one is also, uh, brought forth by our team. We're, we're working as a district to provide non-violent crisis prevention intervention, de-escalation strategies for all staff, um, who might be working day to day with, um, you know, students, staff, parents, a variety of reasons. We're trying really to extend the training that we offer to our county community, uh, and we've chosen, uh, CPI, which is the Crisis Prevention Institute, to provide that training, uh, with, by, by providing training to our trainers. So, we have, um, we have ten trainers in our district currently, eight of whom need recertification. Um, those trainers then go out and train our staff, anywhere from our admin assistants, their professional teachers, um, people who serve on our crisis response team. And so we're really working to extend the number of staff who are being trained, and, uh, and the cost of training our trainers is, uh, is pretty. So, that's it over to Amy. Yeah, the next, um, contract that we have before you is with Build Capacity LLC. One of our focuses that came from, um, our, uh, professional learning for next year was on the universal tier of instruction, so really strengthening our tier one. And we have been partnering with Build Capacity LLC for the last two years, um, to help provide some PD and support for our teacher leaders and our building admin on professional learning communities. Um, some of that feedback that we have received, um, is very well received by our building admin and the teacher leaders. Um, they have found that that has been beneficial to them, and some of the feedback we have received with everyone needs to hear from Paige a little bit more, who is our, um, who is the trainer that we get with Build Capacity LLC. And so to help support that continued movement, um, we have, um, put a contract for you to continue that work. Um, we will be leveraging that at the K-12 level, um, where she will be able to work with our building teams and attend, um, actually go visit each school at the elementary level two times. Um, she'll be able to meet with all staff during the staff meeting, either before or after school, and then be able to actually attend their PLCs and get feedback on what is working, what is not, and to have them be able to reflect and talk about what might need to change. Um, we also have built in some time for her to work at our six-twelve level. Um, we started that work at the elementary level a few years before, and so, um, they've had more time to work with, um, her in those PLC practices. And so our contract, um, leverages additional days at the six-twelve level, so that they're able to, um, have that same opportunity. And she would be visiting each of our middle schools and also our high school, either through some, um, late starts, some early releases, um, during the day to kind of join their PLCs as well to help provide that professional learning. Um, and so we have that contract before you, as well as, um, during our first two institute days, one of those days she will be attending, um, to help, uh, where all staff will be able to hear, um, how we need to begin our school year really thinking about all students, and that we as teachers and educators can do to help, um, facilitate those opportunities and places for our students. And so we're very excited to continue, um, that partnership with her. The next one we have on here is with ROE Four. Um, this last year, we did partner with ROE Four at our six-twelve level, um, to really work with our literacy, um, review, and then they've been working with our English teachers, as well as our science teachers, our math teachers, and social studies teachers at the six-twelve level, and that has gone well. So, we are proposing to continue that work with our middle school ELA. Um, we are moving forward with our curriculum adoption, utilizing Common Lit, and then the focus with ROE Four will be to help support our teachers on smart, small group literacy. So, what are we doing with our students when they don't get it, and what are we doing with them when they do get it, and how do we help to differentiate those strategies? We're gonna continue that work with our middle school and high school social studies, because as a part of this literacy review, we realized that literacy is not just in the English classroom, it's across our whole day. And so a big focus has been, um, with Mr. Chouak, then our department chair is really trying to lead that, um, that interdisciplinary approach to literacy, and that we are all readers in different ways, and so trying to build those strategies in all of our teachers, um, to be able to implement those strategies. We also, um, are looking at our middle school and high school math. They are finishing year three of implementation of Carnegie, um, and we know that we need to continue to strengthen some instructional practices and to center on some look forwards and give some feedback, and so they are able to come, um, help support us. And then, at our kindergarten level, we've been working on purposeful play, and we wanna make sure that our kindergarten teachers have an opportunity to learn about how does that actually look, and what does that look like in a classroom? And so, um, you'll see that this is being presented, um, before you to partner with the ROE Four. Um, why ROE Four and not RRWE might be a question, um, and the reason is RRWE does not offer this support currently, and ROE Four, um, is in Winnebago, and there's two other little places. It's about a thirty-five, forty-five minute drive from us, and they, um, have a more robust professional learning system and structure set up within their ROE. And so, um, the positive to us is they are close by, they are local, and we're able to, um, to, that, to, um, work with them, and they are very in tune with, um, the Illinois, um, literacy plan, the math plan that's coming out, so we're able to really make sure that the support that we're giving our teachers is aligned to that future work. So, I just wanted to clarify, um, that. Um, the other contract that we have from the curriculum side is the Math Institute of Wisconsin. Um, we have completed our final, um, year of our slow roll of illustrative math. We chose, um, to roll that out slowly with our teachers, because we wanted to make sure that they have the capacity to support that new curriculum. It was a huge shift to our teachers' instruction, to shift from the way that envisioned, which was our prior curriculum. Um, instruction was set up to a problem-based learning approach, and so we slow rolled that, and one of the reasons we slow rolled was because we wanted to provide a, um, very, um, robust professional learning opportunity for our teachers. And so what you see before us is, um, the final year of that partnership with the Math Institute of Wisconsin. Um, it is half of what it was last year, because it is for our year-two teachers to actually receive feedback with then coming into their classrooms and seeing their instructions, and getting feedback on is it working, is it not, debriefing, and be able to have those conversations. Um, and so we committed to providing that for our teachers over that long period of time, and so each year, the contract's gotten a little bit smaller, but this is the final year of that. And then we've partnered with NeuroEd. Uh, Dr. Cooper is a psychologist that, uh, is part of NeuroEd, and she's had, she's come out to our district a couple of times this year to train our staff on the eligibility process for special education, which has been a really, um, big focus of ours in this past year, and will continue to be a focus of ours in next year, uh, in our next year. So, she's worked with our psychologists, social workers, and speech pathologists on the eligibility process, and she'll continue to work with us, uh, into next year on IEP compliance and developing IEPs aligned with eligibility for special education. Uh, it's been a really valuable partnership. We'd like to expand that into next year. Um, and then the final contract, uh, that we brought forth was with Infinitec. Uh, we've had a partnership with Infinitec for a very long period of time, and it really supports a large number of our, uh, staff. We have licenses for all of our special education staff to engage in, um, professional learning on a variety of topics, from disability-specific topics to the use of assistive technology and so on. So, uh, they've been a great partner of ours, especially in the, um, area of assistive technology and AAC, and so we would like to continue with their partnership as well.
Do you have any questions?
Other than any questions?
I, I have a question. Uh, going back to the CPI contract.
Yeah.
For that training, and I guess to clarify first, uh, for Mr. Almeyer, I'm not talking about Consumer Price Index.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, for the Crisis Prevention Institute.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, if there is a situation where, because I'm assuming that's paying for the trainers themselves, not for each person who's trained, if a trainer happens to leave the district, which we hope doesn't happen, is there additional cost associated with that, or is it a flat cost?
Yeah, it's a good question. So, we would have to train the new staff. So, we, that, that has happened, right, with, uh, with administrators who maybe take a different role, even in the district if they've, um, you know, so, yes, if someone leaves, we would have to train a new trainer, um, but then that training is good for two years. Um, so we hope that staff don't leave, uh, but it was, that's another reason why we wanted to expand the number of trainers we had in our districts. We don't wanna be, uh, prior to this year, we had two trainers for our whole district, and we wanted to expand that number. So, I think we, ten is a very comfortable number for us, twelve is an even better number for us. So, uh, we're wanting to maintain that, so we can extend our training to more folks. The other difference for us was that in this past year, we offered, um, a half-day training, verbal de-escalation training, and a full-day training. In years past, we were only really doing the full-day training, and so we have a number of different options. Coming up into this school year, we have a third option that CPI is offering, which is a, is an even shorter training, and so we'll be able to leverage our trainers even further. So, we're, we are looking at creative ways to get as many people trained with the right kind of training, because not all staff needs a full-day training, and not all staff needs just, you know, one-hour de-escalation training. So, uh, so, yes, we would have to replace.
So, you built it for questions, it sounds like, uh, for that scenario. Uh, the other question I have is, uh, not so much for today, but I think it would be helpful for the future, is to know, uh, the data of staff injuries and student injuries.
Yeah.
Related to misuse of CPI.
Sure.
So, that way we could, for track, you know, is it effective?
Yeah.
Is it ultimately, it's one thing to be trained, but it's another thing to actually implement that, that training.
Yeah, and we do collect data on any time that we, um, physically intervene with a student, and, uh, we track that any time we go into a physical home, we report that to the State Board of Education. Um, so, we have a really strong process for doing that, and so we do have some data that we can offer. We can talk about that any time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, so my question probably won't come as a surprise to Dr. McCrinder. Um, so Build Capacity Consulting and the Mathematics Institute of Wisconsin both have what appear to be over five-hundred-dollar-an-hour charges, um, and I just, I think that's not respectful of our taxpayers, and we should look for consultants that are active, but are better uses of our tax dollars. So, again, I don't have any problem with the, what we're trying to do with the training, I just think these people are taking advantage of the tax dollars money.
Again, um, I can just add, as we did keep the same cost from last year, um, it is cost that, and so we're able to maintain that same amount of that cost, but I appreciate your time.
One with both of those contracts, um, Dr. McCrinder and I have talked, um, the purpose of the goal is, as, uh, they are now coaching, um, sessions have looked different from year to year. Um, there was some in-person while they were there coaching and training, um, alongside, uh, maybe a teacher leader or administrator while they were in their PLCs, and more of that will be in, um, those kind of visual, if you will, type settings, and then just like the, um, math, that that would, um, end, right? It's gotta be that gradual release where our staff, we feel comfortable carrying that through, and so that those, once of those are discussions we pass forward.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so how long is the certification good for? Is it every two years we're spending that much money on each person?
Yeah, so our initial, when you're initially trained, the cost is higher, and then, uh, on your second year, you do a refresher training, which is free. Uh, our trainers participate in a training, um, at no cost, but they, we do pay a two-hundred-dollar, uh, fee for their, uh, certification. So, on the off-year, it's, uh, low cost, uh, but every two years, they're required to get recertified through CPI. The state of Illinois requires that they, uh, are trained and maintain their training, um, every year. So, they, they participate in their off-year, not because it's required by CPI, but because it's required by the state. So, um, there, but there isn't a, a cost to them for that year. That makes sense? So, uh, so, yes, it's a two-year training cycle for a, uh, certified trainer.
So, it changes and updates that much every two years?
Um, yeah, it, it does, and also, um, it's, it's important, I think, from, not only, again, the state of Illinois requires that those, the trainers have, are retrained every year, annually, CPI says every two years. So, um, I think what changes is, uh, is sometimes a lot, so, um, like in Illinois, the RTO, um, focus, or the restraint timeout legislation that has passed, has impacted CPI, the requirement. I think it's important that all of our trainers know that. I, it certainly can impact our, our board policy, which we've, um, we revisit it every year to make sure our trainers are well-informed, and also, as part of the, the state requirements, that they're training our staff to know what our board policy is on, uh, restraint and timeout. So, yes, things change every year, and we wanna make sure that the trainers have the information they need, because they are leading out to all of our staff about the rules to follow, how to follow it, and, um, and how to keep our school safe. So, um, so, yes, the rules are a little bit different from CPI themselves and the state.
Just to add with the CPI component of that, so, um, one of the things that has additional training trauma informed all of those, well, you know, that's, um, not the same, um, the, uh, the mandatory training that must be done, um, has increased. Uh, we've had our staff, um, CPI-trained for many, many years. Um, the difference about bringing in our own trainers, not only can we bring more trainers in on a regular, or, more staff in on a regular basis to be trained, um, we're not sending someone out for the day, mileage, like, um, Ms. Gill talked about, that, um, now that we'll have that one hour, maybe, um, de-escalation, um, maybe somebody in the office might need that one hour. They don't need the whole part with the, the physical restraint and all of those components. So, we're able to leverage that a little bit. If we didn't have our own trainers, we would still need our staff to be trained, and instead of paying for the trainer every two years, we would be paying for each individual person to go get trained, um, on a set rate, which, it was probably a hundred and something the last time, um, we had done that, and they have to be retrained, um, every two years. So, cost-effective, um, this is probably the better way to go, again, if familiar with our staff, the staff can, um, work through situations, um, or scenarios that have actually happened in our district. So, the cost, um, probably in the end, um, we could do a side-by-side on that. This probably does save us, um, money to do it this way.
Nice, thank you.
Well, if I could just add a comment to that, and certainly we can connect on this further, is there other trauma-informed models that do not involve hands on whatsoever? And that is the direction where the state is going, uh, not to say that's there today, uh, but certain, and I'm aware of one that, uh, uses specially-designed pads that can help, uh, the student who's engaging in self-injurious behaviors, that can slip a pad under their head as they're banging on the floor versus a staff having to restrain that, that student in that case. So, again, not gonna sell that today, but something I think is worth exploring is reduce those injuries.
Agreed, yeah, and we, we have explored that with our, our current behavior specialists around, um, you know, is that our next step as well? Um, our state is looking to reduce the number of restraints and timeouts, um, in, in particular, physical intervention. Um, the state would like us to be at zero, um, that feels comfortable for everyone, and also you have to have a lot of, of training to your point. So, yeah, I think that would certainly be the, the right conversation to have next.
Just a real quick question on CPI. We've got nine buildings, is that for all of our schools, and or is.
Yes, we have, yeah, so we have ten. Uh, we have ten, ten schools, which we count early, we, uh, we count early childhood and light as, um, our whole school district. So, um, are you asking because of the number of trainers?
The same as anyone, or any of the schools exempt.
No.
Yes, so there will be training across for all.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Some of our trainers, some of our trainers don't need to be recertified this year, so they'll need to be recertified next year.
Got it.
And every other year.
And, thank you.
Yep.
Any additional questions? Thank you. Now moving on to six point two, consolidated district plan, Dr. McRindell.
We go to motion until the regular meeting.
So consolidated district plan, we have our consolidation plan in the memo. It is our federal grant formula application. Every year annually, we fill out a form to say how all of our grants will be spent over time. And so you'll see in the memo that we, this includes our Title I grants. The Title I grant is a federal formula that we can utilize for our students who, in our schools, that are designated as Title I. We do not have any schools in the country who are full Title I schools. We have schools that based off of their pre-reduced lunch population or different enrollment statistics do go ahead and qualify to get portions of funds. So Title I, we do have grand dollars that come from there. You'll see also Title II is included in that, I mentioned that in the last memo. Title II is meant to go to support preparing, training and recruiting high-quality teachers, principals and other school leaders. As a district, we typically use all of those funds to support our teachers and our paraprofessionals with their professional learning. And so we designate those funds for professional learning. This grant also includes Title III, which is our language instruction education program and immigrant student education, and so goes to our ELL students, our newcomers, those students within our organization. And then you'll also see Title IV, which is our student support and academic enrichment. This goes to some of our NTFS processes, which can include academic, social, emotional, as well as behavior support. So any of those funds there. We do not qualify for Title V, so we do not have that. And then IDEA grant, which Ms. Gill was speaking about earlier, and Ms. Lombard shared that there are portions of that grant that have to be allocated in certain ways to help support our students. And then we do not have our FSR dollars any longer, and so that's a no. There are some continuing dollars that some districts are finishing up. And so we have fully extended, extended is right, okay. I'm sorry, extended those dollars, so we did not apply for those. So I want to make sure I'm speaking accurately there. And so what we did put in the packet is our entire application of what we did, that we are submitting. The main revisions this year were to identify more specifically the intent and the use of the funds. In prior years, we might have been more general of what we were talking about, but we've been trying to get very specific because we have asked for feedback from our staff on professional learning, so you'll see that that's specifically laid out in there. We also connected our needs assessment to our district's strategic goals. And then we've updated the terms for accuracy and relevance throughout the application. We had a couple of typos or errors with maybe some names of people represented specifically within our ECAP group last year that has been corrected to make sure that it's accurately representing the right board members. And I want to give Ms. Jacobson a huge thank you out in the audience for her hard work in consolidating this multi-page report along with Ms. Gill and our team. It's a lot of work and I appreciate that, but we do need to get your official approval to go ahead and submit that. And then once we receive that approval, we'll push submit and then the state will tell us if we need to make changes. And typically, we do have a couple revisions we have to make within there. But if you have any questions, we are happy to answer those.
That approval come tonight or the 15th?
No, we would go ahead, if there's no questions, to move it forward and then we'll do that on the 15th. One need to move though?
No.
Wait, it'll move forward. Okay, so at the, but at the end, did we move, did we move them over one at a time? Or did we need a?
You don't do a roll call.
Has to come out of committee.
Okay, 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 okay.
All right, so we will move six two forward to the May 15th meeting.
And our last topic is our overnight field trip proposals. This does not require an approval or moving forward to the next meeting. This is simply just an informational, on purpose only. Every year, we do present the overnight trips to our school board and let you know where we are planning on our students having these experiences. There were no new trips added. It is the exact same list, where we have removed some that maybe we didn't attend in the past. But you'll see that there are quite a few different activities at our middle school level, including Washington DC is on there, some of our state cross-country meets, and then at the high school level, many of our summer camps for our football, cheer, dance, boy's cross-country, all those different sports. There's some student council retreats. You'll see our fest bands group going to a festival, dance, show choirs, a lot of great things going on in our district. And so some robotics competitions. And then we did go ahead and we started this last year, but we maintained it, just a, to-be-determined, just state competitions, because we don't know where we're going to qualify, but we are confident that we want to make sure that our students can attend any state competitions to qualify for. And so thank you to Dr. Beal and his team and as well our middle school principals for helping consolidate this list. I know it's a lot of work to really think through all those different parts, so we're excited to have these opportunities for our students. And we just need to inform you if you have any questions, any of us are happy to answer.
Thank you.
I got a question. As far as the overnights, is there any, what are the rules in place as far as like, if it's boys and girls, is it, they all have separate rooms and, right, for every level?
Yes, we do, first off, good evening. We do have procedures for that. We look at, there are some hotels that offer, depending on the size of the group, especially when we go to places for state competitions where our hotels are limited, just Bloomington is very limited, right, with the number of teams that are coming. So they look at sometimes single occupancy rooms, depending on the nature, double, triple or quad rooms. And they are separated by gender. We also look at the coaching staff to assign and ensure that the block of rooms that we have, is kind of what the safety mechanism in terms of knowing where our kids are, where they're located and so forth, practically. So we take all of that into account when planning.
Like biological gender?
Yes, yes, unless there's like a specific reason as to why, then.
Sure. I was just curious, I want those rules, I've never asked. I was just curious, got it, cool.
All right, Special Ed Committee, Ms. Gill.
Yeah, so we notify the public every, like streaming, I don't want to get the date wrong. Did you change my password? Again, you did, that was you again. So every year, we're required to hold what's called a timely and meaningful consultation. Part of what the hotel's fine obligation, where we reach out to our community and we publicly note that we have a meeting. This year, our meeting is scheduled for May 21st, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. It'll be virtual, then posted in the, you know, newspaper, it'll be posted here and we just notify families of any student who is attending a private school in our community. We don't have any private schools, but we do have parents who homeschool their children, which qualifies in the same. And then those students are entitled to what's called proportionate share, there's a proportionate share of our federal dollars that go to support students who qualify. So this is really just our public notice that we will be holding that meeting again this year on May 21st.
And since that's informationally, there won't be a need to move that forward?
Any questions for Ms. Gill?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Finance Committee, eight point one, monthly fiscal update, Earl Meyer.
Thank you. Nothing really to add on the fiscal update. I do have one item that did not appear in the memo, and that is Lion Electric. So if the board remembers and for the new board members, back in November, under the Volkswagen grants, we issued, we had the board approve moving forward with Lion Electric for four electric buses, for which those buses are being paid for 100% through ComEd as well as the BW grant. Two weeks later after the board approved moving forward with Lion, because we did believe at that time that Lion was the better bus, I still believe that, unfortunately, well, they were going through some financial struggle. And they filed the equivalent of Chapter 11 in Canada, because they're a Canada-based company. So over the last several months, they've been going through their Chapter 11 process. That being said, since it happened two weeks after our board moved forward with that, well, we did a change of direction. And in December, we brought to the board a change of PO, if you will, a change of recommendation. And working with our attorneys and feeling like there was little risk involved with that decision, we made that decision to move forward with Bluebird. I bring it up because, well, there was still obviously some risk. And the risk involved was that since the Board of Education approved moving forward with Lion, Lion felt that they actually had a PO issue, although the board never really approved a PO, because we pulled it off the December report. So I'm happy to say, I'm not happy to say for Lion, but I'm happy to say to everybody involved and all the other school districts that have been waiting, that did issue POs to Lion, Lion Electric is headed for dissolution. They're abandoning all of their assets in the US. For the last several months, they were trying last ditch efforts to obtain governmental funding from Quebec to take care of the company, and that didn't pull through. So you may see that in the news, but I just wanted to make the board aware of that, so you're not surprised if you see that. Kind of good news for us, we're expecting delivery of those four Bluebird buses in the next couple months, which is kind of what we were hoping for when initially we were doing business with Lion. So we'll have those for next year. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that information. Any questions on the fiscal memo or that?
Hearing none. Eight point one-one, drivers ed vehicles, enterprise fleet management.
Yeah, so, sorry, I pushed the green button. This is under, this is on the board agenda as an R item. That being said, it was initially put on the board as an informational item because we weren't sure we were going to have all the final numbers from enterprise fleet management for the purchase of two driver ed cars. High school needs replacement of absolutely one of those vehicles. But the fact of the matter is they have two drivers ed cars, and they're both nine and 11 years old respectively. One of them has 133,000 miles, it has got some major repair issues. One is sitting at $90,000. And frankly, knowing that our students are going to be in these, we need to proactively look at a way to replace them. In addition, because of the, you know, I want to say, because of financial flexibility, cash flow reasons, we're looking at a different option. Now, back in 2009, 10, 11, we entertained leasing. We entertained leasing for drivers ed vehicles, for operations and maintenance vehicles, and even buses. And I think we're at that point in time where knowing, knowing where we are currently within our five-year plan and knowing the advantages of working with enterprise fleet management. By the way, they are the largest well, rent-a-car company, but they are also the largest fleet management company in the US. I know many, many school districts in the area that are utilizing enterprise fleet management for the same purpose that we are proposing here, including Crystal Lake and District 300. They have a great purchase. They're currently tied up with Sourcewell Co-op, for which they guarantee essentially invoice costs, less all rebates, less all incentives. Not getting that from local dealers today. In addition to that, they've got a really good disposal program, because they go through the auction and they know how to put the cars through the auction. But these two vehicles, for instance, so if we turn in these two vehicles, they're looking to give us $7,200 sight unseen, because they know the market for those two traded vehicles that are very high miles and obviously very old. Having worked there, I have to be honest, so I need to bring that up. Having worked there, well, many, many, many years ago, because I've been here 17 years, they are a great company. They really, really know what they're doing in terms of fleet management. So I am looking for the board to approve the two drivers ed cars at a net cost of $21,348. They have a low, very competitive interest rate. If we were to go to even some of our main lenders and ask them to finance these from a lease standpoint, the interest rate would be higher. So they're even financing these than less than what we could do with our own partners and the banking institution. The other thing I would add is this is an open-ended equity lease. You know, like what is, this isn't your traditional lease where we lease it and we give the car back. It's actually a lease for which we own it. We own this lease, it's much like a finance. We own all the risk of ownership, but they help us manage the fleet through the disposal and purchase process, which is why they include it. They also include it because they hope that at some point in time, we've got, well, we've got almost 20 vehicles in our fleet from O&amp;M to minivans, the transportation vehicles, the drivers ed vehicles. And they're hoping once upon a time that they can help us with our overall fleet and not only help us with our fleet from purchase and disposal, but from maintenance and fuel. I don't think we're going to go down that road, but, but they are providing two Nissan Tundra SVs at a very, very competitive upfront cost of $21,348 with a monthly lease cost, finance cost of $416. So with that, I do ask the board for their approval to move forward with enterprise fleet management, citing that I think it will provide budget flexibility, improve cash flow and help us in our, in our needs moving forward as well. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
So that $21,000 is for each, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, and a little more history for some of the newer board members. You know, last time we did this was three years ago. So we've got two 2022 Nissan, also Nissan vehicles as driver ed vehicles. And in 2022, right after COVID, the state of Illinois used to have a state contract. They used to do a state bidding contract. And so we used to be able to obtain at very good prices, O&amp;M vehicles, minivan, drivers ed vehicles at the state contract rate, which was very similar, invoice cost, less all incentives at a very good purchase price. Well, ever since COVID, the state has not renewed that whole bidding program for, well, almost everything. So if you, if you're trying to find something with a state contract, there's really nothing out there with the state contract. I think part of the problem is, is we lost a lot of employees over the years and they don't have the manpower to man the state contract piece of this. So this is a great opportunity to kind of get back into the game where we can purchase vehicles at less than hopefully invoice and also at the same time, provide us, you know, capital cost avoidance, if you will, by leasing, provide a little more budget flexibility. I think what it also does is if we stick to it, right, we don't, drivers ed vehicles are not vehicles we really want to drive into the ground, right? We have our students in those, whether the minivans and transportation or our drivers ed vehicles. You know, we probably should be replacing those every five to seven years, and this would, this would help us do that as well. Little background there, Courtney.
So just for my clarification, is it like a dollar buyout lease? With, we own it at the end?
No, there is, there is a residual, so there is a residual and it's 1.5%. So over the, over the years of this finance, it's a 10% residual. And they chose 10% residual so that when we traded in it at auction, they will do that for us and they will pay it off for us when they trade it in at auction. With a 10% residual, there will, they almost guaranteed a payout, a residual balance left over that the school district will receive. And the information you have, as an example, the Ford Taurus and the Ford Fusion, the 2016 and 14 respectively, that $7,200 residual, they'll send us a check for that. We could have baked that into the monthly lease price on these vehicles, but I chose not to. I said, just send us our money. The process moving forward would be when we do trade in a vehicle, then obtain a new vehicle, there will be a residual value that will be paid out, which would be the auction price, less the remaining finance price left on the vehicle, which is 10%.
And I'm not familiar with how the high school handles the drivers ed. A portion of it, we did it outside of the high school. Are there, are there fees? Do they cover the cost of these vehicles? This is really a?
We do, we, yeah, we do charge driver ed fees, pretty standard. That's, that's almost like a statewide fee. It's very similar fees for, for everybody in the state. I think they're $250 per student, and that's like a statewide fee that we charge.
Okay, and then just last is a comment. I have a Nissan SV that my son drives, so I'm comfortable with that car. However, there is some enterprise risk with Nissan long-term, if you read the news, from the financial perspective. So we might want to take that into consideration of whether Nissan is the best car.
The reason we ended up going with Nissan is we currently have some Nissans that have had very good luck with the Nissan. We also went down the Nissan path because as of today, and the vehicles that we were looking for, for the drivers ed vehicles, they provided us, well, the best price as well. So we're also looking at getting, obtaining a vehicle that obviously will suit our needs, but at the same time, we're not looking for a $30,000 drivers ed vehicle if we're dealing with a 21. That was also part of the reason.
There's risk out there with Nissan. I'm not saying it's certain, I'm just saying there's risk.
I'll, I'll look into that, thank you for that. I have not heard that.
Yes, anything else?
Yeah, I just, a quick question related to just student safety. I'm assuming there's some sort of certification process that these cars are inspected either by enterprise or does the district inspect them after they receive these vehicles?
Yeah, well, as part of every major car purchase, right, we review those. We also have to, once we receive the vehicle, we bring it to our transportation department. And we also work with aftermarket to itself, for instance, right, a passenger side rig, because their drivers ed vehicles, the enterprise. And dealerships on their own, they don't do that for you. We have to take that in, and that'll be an aftermarket add-on. So we'll also have our mechanics look at that and make sure it's ready to go.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Eight point two, payables, purchase orders, impressed checks, persons, any questions on those? Anything to add?
No, nothing to add. And I don't mean to go backwards, but does the board want to take action on that to move that forward as a consent item at the next meeting? It's currently under R, but, you know, and we could put it as an action item on the next board agenda, but it's. It's, it's currently under R, but, you know, and we could put it as an action item on the next board agenda, but it's, it's really ready to go. There is, within the memo, there is a recommendation to move forward, so I leave that to the board, but I, I figured.
Troy, do you have any issues with that?
Going to consent?
Yeah, do you have any issues?
I have no issues going to consent. I'm fine with that.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that. I apologize for that, but we didn't think we'd have all the information in the memo. Nothing to add on the, uh, the payables reports, um, Democratic.
Any other questions? Eight point three, revenue and expenditure report, Mr. Almeyer.
I go mingled amongst all my other papers. Um, in front of you, you have the nine-month ended March twenty twenty-five financial executive summary. You know, the biggest risk, and we talked about this the last several months, uh, continues to be health insurance, right? I'm not going to really focus on anything but health insurance. For the month, we had almost one point two million dollars in claims, uh, which is very consistent with what we've been seeing, especially in February, January was the highest. I bring that up because Dr. Zare and myself both had the opportunity this past week to also have a meeting with Blue Cross Blue Shield summarizing. Well, the two thousand and twenty-four plan year, which is the two thousand and twenty-four calendar year in claims. Um, and as you know, uh, half essentially, right, half of the two thousand and twenty-four calendar year is part of the current fiscal year. And so in reviewing that, that data, um, you know, there's a lot of alarming things going on in the healthcare industry. And one of the biggest is, is RX pharmaceuticals. We are seeing, we are seeing a significant increase, almost, I think, seven to eight hundred thousand dollar increase. In the two thousand and twenty-four plan year versus the two thousand and twenty-three plan year, um, in RX, right? We didn't really see, you know, come versus the two thousand and twenty-three plan year, the medical costs were relatively flat. I mean, they were up a little bit, but the majority of the increases that we are seeing is, they're on the RX side, they're on the pharmaceutical side. We, we have, uh, seen an increase and we've had a few new large claimants come into the pipeline, some, some very material. Unfortunately, very large claimants come into the pipeline, um, that don't appear to be going away, fortunately. And so I did want to make the board aware that we did have that meeting. Dr. Zare and myself, uh, will summarize, summarize some of that information, but we also need to share all that information that we did receive. With the health insurance committee, so we plan on doing that the next few weeks. And at that point in time, when we summarize that information, working with our broker alliance, we could also share some of that information, um, with the board. The ultimate goal I think we all have is to have healthy membership, healthy employees, right? It's, I think, what we want for everybody. We want our employees to take ownership of their own health. And so that, well, that'll be healthy. We can minimize claims, um, for the whole pool, um, that we're seeing here. We also will be entertaining at the next health insurance committee meeting, um, a possible, you know, co-op situation, a pooling situation. Where we join upwards of maybe twenty-five other districts and we leverage their ability, um, to reduce fix fees. They're not going to really help us with our medical claims, right? We're going to be part of that pool. But certainly having twenty-five districts and a volume of membership that they have, they do have the ability to help us lower our fix fees with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Including that stop-loss fees, because that stop-loss fees, the insurance that covers large claimants is rising. It's really rising for our district. So, uh, so we're going to be doing that in the next couple of weeks. That is something we absolutely need to take a look at, a hard look at, to see if that will help us. And we may have to look at benefits, right? We might have to look at the benefits we are providing our, our membership. And working with that team to do the best we can for the district as a whole, because obviously what we are seeing, and I think Mr. Bittman, is it's not sustainable. It's really not sustainable over time. So it's, it's probably one of our biggest challenges I see, um, moving forward for the district, so. That's, that's, that's where I would end that. On the, other than that, on the revenue expenditure side, we've got a lot of consistency with prior years. You know, a lot of, a lot of our revenues start flowing really in the last quarter of the year when all of our reimbursements are gone, all our categoricals are coming in. All our final payments are received even over the summer months from property taxes to CPPRT and things of that nature. So, uh, no other real major concerns other than the health insurance side, so. A little more than maybe the bar report tonight, but I did want to share all that.
Just a quick question and follow-up on the co-op side of things. As, as we all may recall, that I've been on the board for a while, um, the pharmaceutical stuff has been one of the clear drivers of this. I think they've even said that our mixture, uh, we use more pharmaceutical than other districts, um, in, in terms of the, the spend. We have a restriction, I think, understanding of that right now, that we cannot, um, price out our pharmaceutical business. Uh, because of some contract limitations we have. Does the co-op give us more freedom around that? Because that was one of the, probably the benefits we could have of giving everybody the same pharmaceuticals, but potentially less.
Yeah, I, I do believe there may be. Um, I can't a- answer that definitively. I know that we met with Gallagher, who runs the co-op, who runs several co-op, uh, health insurance co-op, and that was over nine months ago. And so I can't, I can't definitively remember on that specific point. But that's part of the reason we do want Gallagher to come in with the health insurance committee and to walk through what the advantages are with the co-op. And answer those exact type of questions.
Right, because we're essentially locked in the Blue Cross Blue Shield, whatever their pharmaceutical.
Well, their, their pharmaceutical is Prime, Prime Therapeutics.
And, and we can't shop that out. They're a big company.
And years ago, in two thousand and eleven, I had a group of districts, we all banded together, that we were going to lead Prime Therapeutics. And we were going to go to a cost-plus environment, uh, express scripts at the time. And at the time, our school district, and this was a lot of money, well, at the time, our school district stood to save approximately four hundred thousand dollars a year. On RX, because we would go to a cost-plus script environment. And every other district, they were looking at saving the same thing. Well, what I heard was Blue Cross Blue Shield got the wind of that. And Prime being the sister company, if you will, the, like, the pharmaceutical company of Blue Cross Blue Shield. Said, well, if you do that, well, you will no longer be covered by Blue Cross Blue Shield. You will not receive our stop-loss insurance, you will not receive our third-party administration, you will have to go shopping. So we went shopping, right? Every, we all went shopping and we found that, oh, it's not as competitive out there. In fact, the stop-loss insurance and, and other things we were looking at were more expensive than that four hundred thousand dollar gain we would have had. So they kind of, um, they, they pulled an end around it. They heard what we were doing. And, um, I was hoping we could get it done and we, and we couldn't get it done. So that was when Blue Cross Blue Shield said, nope, you have to have Prime, um, pharmaceuticals. If, if you're with Blue Cross Blue Shield in Illinois. So I think that's what you're referring to.
Yep.
We're going to do the best we can and then we'll learn a little bit more about that once we meet with, uh, um, Gallagher and the health insurance committee. Great question. Thank you.
Moving on to eight point four, revenue contract?
Uh, nothing to add there. There's just one, uh, high, Humpty High School, Boy's Lacrosse, uh, rated three sixty-five. Administration recommends the board of education approve that one.
Any other questions? All right, moving to buildings and grounds, Mr. Troy.
You want that to move to?
Yeah.
You're good with that.
All right, moving to, uh, item nine, building and grounds, uh, pretty start one tonight, operations and maintenance updates, Mr. Lindquist.
Mr. Troy. Couple of updates here. The community solar project crews are continuing to install the racking system for the solar panels and will be installing panels shortly. The projected completion date is the first of the year right now, but that will, that's, that's, you'll be done. Attached, you have a certificate of achievement. Um, we receive this, uh, for our yearly participation in the SEM program. There's a notable increase in electricity savings, uh, is recognized. And some of the projects contributing to that will be the chiller at Shetland when in last year, uh, kitchen makeup air unit at the high school. And then the production, yearly production now for the buzz solar field, the small array we have here. Um, not on the report is the April work orders, um, for the O and M department. We received five hundred thirty-six work orders with the average completion time of two days per work order. O and M team, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions from the committee or the board in general? All right, thank you for that report. Appreciate that. Um, moving on to the board of education, uh, item ten, I've been provided minutes for your review. For the April twenty-ninth special meeting that was held a couple of days ago. Go ahead and move that to the regular board meeting approval.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
I got a question. I don't know what you just said, but I know, um, I printed out the agenda last night and I was writing notes on it and it's changed. So when you asked for the adoption at the beginning, I didn't realize that two committees were taken off, which the legislation and the community relations was taken off. And so I'm community and not that I had a heavy-duty report, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments if I could, if that's okay.
The only one that should have been removed was the policy, so I'm not, because we had nothing for that. So, um, I don't know how that got removed, so.
Yeah, because I, because I have on my sheet ten and eleven and I'm like, oh, ten's you. That's not what I had.
And I'm going through the paper because I'm having a technical difficulty today.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll permit go right ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to make just a couple of comments about, I went, um, my son's in eighth grade at Heinemann and they, and we went to the Holocaust museum. And I was one of the chaperones and I just wanted, it, it was such a learning experience and it was fantastic and that the kids got to go to that. I think that's so important. I hope we leave that in our district, doing that every year. So I just want to, I know Mr. Ari set that up, well, with numerous, um, other teachers, I'm sure. But it was, it was fantastic and I learned a lot and it was very emotional and it was, you know, as it is. So, but I just wanted to say, just reflect on that. And then the impact event, um, for Eastern European night, that was so fantastic. I mean, because I was able to go for like an hour, um, and man, it was, it was packed and it was, and, and then I was told by Natalia that it was half had gone already. So I'm like, okay, we're going to have to move this to a bigger place and so for the next night. So, but the food was fantastic, the people were wonderful, the kids doing all the dances and all those performances was so special. And so I just wanted, I, I know that was such a big deal to have and I just wanted to do a shout-out on that, how wonderful that was. So, um, and I know there's another event for the Asian fusion coming up next week. I thought, just remind everybody that's happening at Marlo on Tuesday. So, yeah. Anyways, that's all I had. I want to just mention those things.
Thank you for doing that. Appreciate it.
You bet.
All right, uh, with that, we'll move on to item eleven on the printed agenda, um, public comments. I don't have any forums, don't see any new forums, so we'll go on, nothing on that. With not, item twelve, closed session, uh, it is seven thirty-two. We'll make a motion to enter into closed session for the items that are listed in the agenda.
Second.
Mr. Bobby, if the second, uh, we could have a call vote, please.
Mr. Bittman?
Yes.
Mr. Spicati?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Bobby?
Yes.
Mr. Craig?
Yes.
All right, with that, we are in quote motion. Uh, thank you for those that are here tonight again for attending.
One.
All right, it's 9:14 in the evening. We will resume open session having concluded closed session. Nothing coming forward out of closed session. Please take your roll call.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Bobby.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Brady.
Here.
Mr. Bivin.
Here.
Thank you. With that, I'll make the motion to adjourn. Open session at 9:15 p.m.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, for the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. Thank you.